Welcome, everyone. Thank you for your patience as we've been having some technical difficulties. This is the January 2nd, 2024 Gray Town Council meeting. We are operating in a hybrid format through GCTV and hopefully a Teams link, which will be forthcoming as soon as possible. I'll begin with roll call. Councillor Gas.
Present.
Councillor McGuire.
Present.
Councillor Meany.
Present.
Councillor Height.
Here.
And I'm Councillor Chapel, and to my right is interim Town Manager Josh Tiffany. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which this evening only includes minutes from the December 19th, 2023 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I'll give it to Matthew. Okay, we'll go to vote. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I am actually going to abstain since I was not present at the December 19th meeting. Okay, and next up is public comments of non-agenda items. Comments are intended for information sharing, not discussion. Comments in excess of three minutes are welcome at the end of the agenda prior to adjournment. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to make a comment on non-agenda items? Nobody in chambers willing or wanting to make a comment? And I don't think we're up and running online yet, so. So I will close public comment at 7:16 PM. Does anyone have any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
I have none.
I have none.
Yeah, okay. So I will move on to action items. First up, looking for a motion to review and act upon approving the acceptance of a settlement offer for gray fire and rescue account 40-20-1305 in the amount of $469.60 as an in-full payment of an open account with a balance of $939.20 from December 20th, 2020. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Chief, thanks for coming up. This was forwarded to me by, I think, John Hart. We had, in your packet, you'll see a letter from the person's attorney that.
Lowery and Associates.
Yeah, Lowery and Associates, correct. Yeah, the person who has the balance, I believe that's their attorney. In the email I received from John, it looks like our collection agency was recommending that we settle this account. Is that your understanding, Chief? Or do you have any back?
This is an offer from the person who received services from us to settle the account. I believe it's been, it was handled by our billing agency and then transferred into collections.
Right, that was my understanding from the email. So this would be essentially an in-full payment that we are settling on, even though it's not the entire amount of the balance. Go ahead, Dan.
Chief, it says this stems from December 2020, 20th, 2020. Do we, is there a process that we have for resolving these? Or do they just hang out there for, sort of indefinitely?
I believe the process is our billing company reaches out and offers to set up a payment plan. And barring that, barring no response from the client that it goes to collections.
And when it goes to collections, what's the, how does that work for our costs and expense and sort of time on task?
I'm not sure. It's purely a percentage. I'm not sure. The collection agency doesn't get paid unless they collect. Then they get a percentage of what they collect. I'm not sure what that percentage is.
Okay, so that, they're obviously out of this then if we settle this because they won't have collected. Is that correct?
I'm not sure that's the case. I think they were, they were, yeah, they were working to settle. And I think they were working with this person's attorney, which is Lowery and Associates.
So this is through the collection agency?
Yeah. Yeah, I had an email from John that was originally from the collection agency. They had enclosed this offer and was recommending that we settle the account.
Do we know what our expenses are on this particular issue to date?
I know this is 50% of what our bill was.
Yeah, but I assume we have some other expenses in it, too.
Yeah, I don't have that detail.
Just through the collection process.
For the collection process, yeah.
That's what you're asking, right, Dan?
Yes, I just, I mean, the original bill was for $939.20. The proposed settlement is $469.60. I'm assuming that we've also spent some money trying to get here. I just would like to understand what that was.
So let me read to you the email I have from the collection agency. It says, and it was directed to the chief here, from Mary Beth at Medical Reimbursement Services. It says, "We received a settlement offer on the account number noted. This is an open account with a balance of $939.20 from 2020. This account was in collections in 2021 for non-payment and pulled in 2022 and has been in attorney status since then. We cannot make a negotiation or settlement decision without your consult. I have attached the letter for your review. Please advise as to what response you would like us to return to the attorney's office." So that's why Chief has kicked it back to us, because ultimately it's up to us.
I mean, this is, I think, the first one of these I've seen.
Yeah.
It happens very seldom. I'd be curious to know at some point in time, what for these services, like, what's outstanding? What do we have in collection? I just would like to know more about the process.
Yeah, I would agree. I didn't, there wasn't a lot of detail here, but yeah.
That might be a question for Justine, too.
You gave a figure. You said the original bill was for how much?
$939.20.
I'm just getting it from what you've given us.
Right, yes.
But that was the number they cited as the current balance, right?
It says for transportation services performed on December 20.
Yeah, I guess, I was presuming it was, that was the original balance. But you're right, it doesn't, it just says it's a balance. So perhaps they've been paying towards it. Yeah, that's a good question.
Or would, like, interest payments accrue to that balance? You know, like, or, you know, like, late fees and that sort of thing?
Right.
Yeah, that would be good information.
I guess where I'm coming from, I think, you know, at this point, we approve it. But I think going forward, I'll sort of put my thoughts together. But I'd like to understand more about how the charging and collection process works. And like I said, how much of, what have we billed? What have we collected? What's outstanding? I'd like to know those three numbers.
Well, I mean, I think those are all good questions.
Not for tonight, but they're just something interesting.
Well, are we comfortable approving something where we don't have the full information?
Honestly, we're not going to get any more money for this.
No, I know, I know. I think you're right.
That's kind of where I'm. Otherwise, I wouldn't say no.
And it's hundreds of dollars, not tens of thousands of dollars.
Right, right.
I think it's just, let's move on.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm in favor of closing this one out, but I also agree with Dan. And in the future, it would be good to have a little more detailed information about what do these balances represent.
Yeah, it sounds like it's pretty unusual for this to make it all the way here to the council, so.
Yeah, I've never seen you.
Okay, well, let's go for a vote. It sounds like we're okay with that. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
I'll take care of it.
Thanks.
Do we need to, do we need to sign this letter that was in here? I'm not sure.
I don't really have to, but I assume either you have it or Justine.
Yeah, it looks like you might need a new letter, though, because this said we needed to reply within 14 days and the date was the 4th of December, so. Just, you might want to inquire about that.
I'll find out.
Yeah. Next up, looking for a motion to review and act upon approving the acceptance of the Homeland Security grant in the amount of $18,125.99 for the purchase of items to support fire rescue needs during an active shooter event.
So moved.
All right, I'll give it to Marty.
The one item on my computer.
One question I had, Chief, was, so the amount we put in the motion was the budgeted amount for the, but I wasn't sure if that was the full grant award or not.
Yes, the grant is for the $18,000. Did you mention?
Okay, $18,125.99, okay.
Yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ann.
Yeah, I just, is there, some of these seem like there may be more, you know, like a use-by date for some of the bandages or something like that. I mean, are these items that can, I mean, the best scenario is that we never have to use them, right? The preferred scenario. But in the event that it's a few years before we're in a situation where something like this is needed, are all these supplies and stuff able to be used? Or is this something we'll need to look at replacing some of these going forward?
There are some items that are going to have a shelf life. Some of the items that have, like QuickClot, and some of the bandages that have QuickClot embedded in them, they will have a shelf life. But those things are not where the expense is really. Yeah, those go to a shelf life on those.
Right, right. So I just, so you must have a process of sort of, for keeping track of what needs to be reordered and that kind of thing.
We have to inventory everything.
Yeah, I imagine, yeah. Okay, that was my only question. Thanks.
Yep, go ahead, Dan.
It's a good one, though, because in the future, I think it would be helpful to know what the cost going forward of accepting the grant is. So in other words, this is $18,000. Does that mean that our budget outgoing out is going to increase $1,000 or $9,000? That's kind of an important consideration.
You mean for maintenance costs going forward?
Right, yes. Because if we accept this, then we're building additional expense into the budget for you. And I just would like to know upfront what that number is.
Realistically speaking, I think it's something we need to evaluate on a year-to-year basis. Kind of like the rescue boat we bought years and years and years ago. How much sense does it make to keep this stuff in stock?
Right.
We applied for this grant before the shooting in Lewiston.
Yeah.
Right.
Who knew, right?
Who knew, exactly.
Yeah.
But some of the materials will not have a shelf life. And I've got to be honest with you, I don't know what the shelf life is on QuickClot, but I know there is one.
Yeah.
And do we have to do it all at once? Probably not. I mean, we can budget it.
Yeah.
So we need to look at it realistically.
Yeah, I mean, I just think when we're buying equipment, there is going to be maintenance or service. When we're buying supplies, there's going to be, to Ann's point, restocking. It would just be nice to have some of that information when you ask for the approval for the grant in the future. Fair enough.
Yeah, I noted in your memo that you are requesting Latitude to shop for the best prices because you will deal with different distributors for these items. Do you, should we include in the, right now, the motion doesn't specify who the purchasing party is. We should.
I don't think we have to do anything because it's just the amount.
Right.
However, the chief gets that.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that the language is appropriate, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that you understood perfectly exactly what I was talking about because there are multiple pieces.
Right.
And not any one category reaches the threshold, but I want to make sure you understood.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, Matthew.
I guess I would just say that, you know, this asset management plan or program that I'm always on about is, would, you know, that would systematically, that's a systematic way of evaluating that, you know, when you get equipment, what's, you know, and not just this kind of equipment, but any kind of equipment. What's the, you know, what's the lifecycle costs associated with it?
Yeah, we, I mean, we had our budget discussion on parts of it yesterday, but we didn't get into our questions, and I have a whole bunch. So that's, that, you know, our capital costs and tracking some of that stuff is part of that. So yeah, I think we're all, it sounds like we're all pretty much on the same page.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions for Chief on this particular grant? I'll go to vote. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Seems a very timely purchase, Chief. Thank you.
Unfortunately, it was the last one.
Thank you.
Okay, next, looking for a motion to review and act upon approving the appointment of Grace Vaughn Allure as a regular member of the Blueberry Festival Committee with a term expiring on August 31st, 2026.
So moved.
Just trying to get to the right packet page, packet page 13. So Marty, do you know Grace or?
No, I don't.
No? Okay, well, thank you, Grace, for applying.
Yeah, thank you very much, Grace.
Sounds like she's going to have really relevant experience to this committee, so that'll be great. All right.
Actually, it does, I just want to point out again that, I know it's a pet peeve. I know it's in process, but this application is different from the other ones because they come at us from different directions.
Well, this one was the online version versus the handwritten.
Right, and we still need to reconcile the two, I think, so that we're just getting one.
Some of the questions are different on one than the others. Is that, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we need to reconcile that.
I do know her. I met her last month.
Oh, okay.
Now that I saw the address, I'm sorry.
I agree, thank you, Grace.
Yeah, thank you. Certainly appreciate everyone volunteering. All right, I would go to vote. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, next, I'm looking for a motion to review and act upon approving the appointment of Valerie Raza as a regular member of the Open Space Committee with a term expiring on August 31st, 2026.
So moved.
I just want to thank Val for reapplying. I know she's been a very active member these last three years, and before that, she served on the Comprehensive Plan Committee. So I know she has a lot of good input and valuable experience.
Yeah, that knowledge base is really important to keep in the group. So I do appreciate her reapplying for this role.
Certainly.
Yes, through thick and thin. She's been there.
Right, I know.
I really appreciate that.
Okay, I'll go to vote. Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So the next one, just, well, I'll go with motion, then I'll make a note. I'm looking for a motion to review and act upon approving the appointment of alternate member Deborah McHugh as a regular member of the Blueberry Festival Committee with a term expiring on August 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
So you'll note, we don't, we didn't have in our packet an application for Deborah because she's actually already serving on the committee as an alternate member. This would just elevate her to a regular member with an expiration in 2025. I believe there was a resignation. Is that the situation, Josh? Yeah, so there was a resignation, and so she would be elevated to a regular member instead of an alternate. Does anyone have questions or concerns around that? I know we don't have the.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I appreciate the fact that Deborah's been an alternate member and is just stepping up, but.
A note has been made for future reference.
Yeah, I missed, I missed that it was missing in the packet. And, but Josh and I thought, since it was just a move up, that we could make an exception this time. But if people are uncomfortable, we can revisit it again at our next meeting.
Nope.
None of the circumstances.
Okay, all right.
And just to be clear, I mean, you would, we would just look at their old application, not ask them to reapply.
Right, we could fish out their original application, yeah.
I would just say I have no problems asking somebody to update it. You know, if something's changed or there's something valuable to know about that. We're, just because you volunteered doesn't necessarily mean that you're the best candidate for that particular role. And I think that we need to have enough information to individually decide whether or not we can support that person. Because ultimately, the responsibility is ours if we choose someone who's not affected in their role and either, you know, makes it more difficult for the committee to move forward or whatever the reason is. I, that's, you know, and, you know, please, Deborah, don't misunderstand. This isn't anything personally about you. It's just about our responsibility as councillors, because these are town council committees.
Yes.
All their authority originates from us.
And from my point of view is, we, you know, they were appointed as an alternate. They applied once. This is a sort of a natural step for them to fill a vacancy. And I wouldn't want to, I mean, yes, if they have new information that they want to share with us, that's great, but I wouldn't want to say, well, you can't get that position unless you reapply. I don't think that's correct.
Right, I agree. I think when we're elevating someone from an alternate position, if we, their application essentially would remain unchanged, the same person applying for the same position. I, I don't know, I'm comfortable using their original application in that circumstance. I do agree that an updated application is beneficial when they're being reappointed after their term has expired, because they would have had more.
That's essentially what this is, though, because it's a new three-year term.
Actually, filling in a two-year, or.
Yeah, one and a half, one and a half-year term, but.
I'm in the minority, that's okay. We can move on.
Okay.
But I think that, you know, there are times when people have been on committees and they're up for reappointment, and they haven't been reappointed. And there's been reasons for that.
Yeah, and I think when you're considering.
If I bumped into Deborah, if I ran into Deborah's car in the parking lot, I wouldn't have a clue who she is.
That's, that's true.
That's fair enough.
But I mean, I guess not renewing somebody wouldn't be because of information we get on their application necessarily. Would be my perception. But I think what I may do is ask the town clerk to just simply, when someone is going through such a, from an introvert, not introvert, but from a.
Alternate.
Alternate, thank you, to a full membership, just to get an email out of them saying, like, is there anything you could add to your applicant, to your original volunteer application?
Yeah, that would.
And then an email saying, no, there's nothing new to add. Or they're saying, yes, I have this experience.
Or even an email from the chair of the committee or something like that.
A recommendation from the chair would be great.
Yeah, that would be helpful. I would just hate to make them go through the whole process again if that's not necessary.
Although, as we've noted in the past, I mean, if somebody's been on a committee for a while, they might, you know, council members change over, and so.
They're an unknown.
Right, they're an unknown to at least some of the members of the council. So that's, and I think especially in a scenario where there are multiple applicants for the same.
Well, yeah.
Vacancy, then I think there needs to be, you know, there definitely needs to be written applications in those cases.
But if we do it for instances when there's multiple applications for the same position, we have to be consistent.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we have to be consistent when we have multiple applicants. We don't have to be consistent when there's multiple applicants when we only have one applicant, I don't think.
Okay, that's what we disagree.
I think that's reasonable to be not consistent when conditions are different.
I think we all agree that it would be helpful to have an application in the packet. And if they're moving up from an alternate position, at least some sort of acknowledgement of their.
Yeah, that they want.
That they want to and/or, you know, a recommendation from a committee member or something would be helpful.
Yeah, the chair, I think, is an excellent idea.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, so let's move to a vote. I think we can amend our process going forward. Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. And I want to just thank Deborah for.
Thank you, Deb.
Yes, thank you.
Maintaining her commitment to the Blueberry Festival.
Yeah.
Okay, next, looking for a motion to review and act upon approving a liquor license renewal and a special amusement renewal for Dickinson Enterprises Corporation doing business as Tailgate Bar and Grill located at 61 Portland Road.
So moved.
I'll second it.
So you have materials in your packet, beginning on packet page 20, 19, actually, with a memo from Britt, just kind of noting the history here. Josh, do you have any additional background?
I have nothing.
No, okay. So it looks like Tailgate had failed an inspection at the beginning of 2023, and then they were granted some temporary improvements for a year, excuse me, temporary approvals for a year. And they have since passed both an inspection and renewal approval from the Code Enforcement Office and also from Chief Alkanic. But they were, but they did have some things they still needed to address seemingly, particularly with housekeeping and some parking issues outside to allow for space for emergency vehicles. It doesn't sound like Britt is noting any concern here. It's just that that was just the detail that she was providing, so. I don't have any more background than what's here on this, but.
I'm right here.
Oh, okay, great. If you could just come up to the podium and state your name and address, and then if you could sign in also.
Susan Dickinson. I am the owner of Tailgate Bar and Grill. Last year, we had some things that they finally said you need to fix. We finally used our COVID money, got them all fixed. They were all fixed within three weeks. They approved us all last year without any problems. Fortunately, nothing is 100% perfect, and this light went out. We got that fixed, and we found Code Enforcement in. He gave us a half a dozen things, and they're all been remedied since then. I asked Kurt, I go, I did not get a report from him this year, so I don't know what he wrote his. But when I get his report, I've usually have gotten things done pretty quickly, so.
Yeah, no, I think in Chief's report, he had noted some housekeeping issues with the storage of plates, and then also some, the parking lot isn't lined at all, so.
That's not our problem.
I was going to say, it sounds like you would need to address that with your landlord, yeah.
It's the landlord, and I've already even tried to get him to fix it. But whenever I have a medical emergency, we have a straight line in play. I say, all the cars need to move immediately. We just had a medical emergency last month, and my car is right in front so that it can be moved quickly, because that will be the ambulance spot. Pure, excuse me, we have a pure, I taught.
No, I do see it, that's.
We have a pure line of, that we keep vacant as much as possible. It's usually the blues jam that's usually trying to get the elderly to park straight on Sunday afternoons is the issue. And we usually just police our own parking lot and have it so it's available for cars to come in. Our other thing is, the sweet spot is in front of us. That is our fire lane also. And they were granted diagonal parking during, with our fire lane, too. So we have to share the space, unfortunately.
Yeah, thank you for that background. It does sound like both the chief and the code enforcement officers approved your renewal, so they were just noting those issues. So certainly you would want to address any of, anything that the landlord could fix, particularly related to parking with them. Does anyone else have questions or comments? Go ahead, Dan.
I have a couple. On our packet page 22, it's page one of 11 of the application. Number one, it says that this is a renewal, it says the expiration date is 1/14/24, which is coming right up.
That's right.
I, that confused me.
So the way I understand it, from the background I have, is that they, their approval of the, like, year-long permit was.
Until this date.
Until that date in 2024, yeah.
I got you, okay.
Right, we had an extension last year.
Got you.
With the COVID, so we went from September to January, and then from January is our new one. And Town of Gray extended their amusement license with the state last year so that they were on the same date.
Very good, thank you. And how? And, and how long is the license good for normally?
One year.
It's each year?
Every year, yes.
That's what I thought, okay. My only other comment was.
And we're on year 10.
Yes.
No, you've been around a while, yeah.
Looking at the information that came from the state, it looks like last January was a tough month. There were 12 stops, by the look of it, or incidences there, but since January, there's actually been fewer than there were in the whole month of January, so.
Are you talking about packet page 37, where they talk about the infractions with the, the police officers? Yeah, I think that actually was November 30th, 2022, through December 3rd, 2023. Oh, yes, sorry.
Yes, yeah.
I was, never mind, you're correct in your dates, yep.
Yeah, but there were 12 in, in January alone, and there's only been nine since January, so that seems like that's a positive.
Mm-hmm.
Into, in your favor.
I'm trying.
Yeah, no, well, I think, to me, that shows that, you know.
You're succeeding.
You're succeeding, yeah, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah.
But those are my.
I don't believe anybody that says they have a right. I don't believe, I go, when you're done, you're done, and that's all.
Yeah.
Whether you tell me you're for riding or not.
Thank you.
Right, yeah, I mean, it looks like a lot of the infractions here are more traffic-related, and there's only three OUIs on there, so, yeah. Okay, anyone else have comments? Thank you for giving some background, I appreciate it.
Oh, you're very welcome, I don't know any of you here.
All right, I'm just looking for a vote. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
I'm also a yes.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
So I'll, no offense, but I do need that paperwork soon, so I think get it to the state.
Yeah, I don't know, Josh, what's the turnout?
I'll talk to Britt.
Yeah, if you want to check in.
Okay, first thing tomorrow, start asking about it.
Yeah, if you could also, you could check in with town clerk Britt Barton, she could help you out with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next up is to review and act upon approving the application for Avesta Housing's Community Development Block Grant of $90,000 for property located at 12B Collier Brook Road.
Let's back to page 39.
So move?
Second?
Yeah, that's right, it begins on packet page 39.
Yeah.
Just, so just some background that wasn't in your packet, so you're, you see in your packet the application filled out by Avesta Housing. What's, what's, if you'll also note that, what packet page was it on? Packet page 40, the Town of Gray is listed as the lead agency. So Avesta Housing reached out to the town, inquiring whether or not they could apply through the town for a community development block grant to address a dilapidated property on Collier Brook Road. The Collier Brook Road development is run by Avesta as an affordable income development of duplexes and single-family homes. Currently, this particular address is vacant and dilapidated, it's been apparently vacant for about five years, and Avesta's looking to rehab it and then sell it so that it could be occupied and provide another affordable unit in the town. The, we had feedback from town staff and planning that, and I believe some other departments, that we don't have any pending CDBG grants coming up, and so that we do have space, I think we're allowed to per year, and we don't, we don't have any applications pending or plan to submit anything imminently. So we thought this was certainly a worthwhile project that the town would certainly entertain supporting, and wanted to discuss as a council.
I agree.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, please come up if you want to just state your name and sign in.
Hi, Rain Doherty from Avesta Housing.
Oh, great.
Nice to meet you all. Thank you so much for considering this application, really appreciate it. Actually, as I was sitting here, found an error, and I was enjoying this opportunity to, to make a correction on the cover page.
Oh, okay.
So it says that the, the amount requested is $90,000, and then it also says that the project is $90,000, but it's actually $266,213.
Right, I, I think your following materials did note that total project cost of the larger amount there, so thank you for clarifying that.
You're very welcome. If you have any questions, I'm happy to.
Thank you, appreciate it. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
No, I think, I mean, I think it was a good, I, it was good that you approached us, I think that was good, because it was an opportunity, and, and to Krista's point, you know, we checked with everyone internally to make sure that there weren't some other needs that might not get filled because of this, and so feels like a win-win to me.
Right, certainly, yeah, I know Avesta does good work, you have another property in town that people are happy to have, and it's a resource.
Another project in the works.
But I think, you know, certainly maintaining the properties that are already out there for people to afford and live comfortably makes a lot of sense. Oh, you, did you have a question, Doug?
I did.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me, Doug Webster, managing director. As the council's probably aware, administration of any CDBG grant takes quite a bit of paperwork, and there's forms and estimates and submittals and so forth. I guess I'm just wondering if it's anticipated that if the town were to support this, would there be an impact on town staff for the administration of it?
Sorry, I did mean to bring that up, so I, I forget who the original email I received this from, but someone on staff did note that Avesta would be doing all the administrative work for, and maybe you could confirm that also?
I was trying to understand, I have 30 years of municipal government.
No, that's a good point.
And I'm, I'm just trying to get a better handle on what the town's role is or is not.
My understanding is that they're applying through our account essentially with, with the, with the county, and that Avesta would be managing all the administrative work and the reporting for the grant.
Okay.
If you, if you wouldn't mind.
I just haven't seen one, that's all.
No, that's a fair question, yeah.
Creative financing.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so Avesta is fully prepared to do all of the procurement and meet all of the federal regulations and reporting for, for the grant. It's something that we are practiced at, so that should be good. I don't know if the county or the town does the environmental review reports, if, if it is on the town to approve that, I could draft an environmental review report for consideration for town staff and do that legwork.
Yeah, I think, I think stat, I just was going through my emails, and, so I had an email from Krista Musinski, town planner, just noting that Avesta would be, you know, shouldering all, all the reporting and everything, so I, I think, I certainly would be comfortable with you managing that and reporting back to us, I don't know how folks feel about.
Who will sign, who will sign the paperwork?
I believe, I believe Josh would sign the paperwork, yeah.
So ultimately, then, the town is responsible.
Yes.
For the expenditure of the grant.
But I.
I'm not saying that's a problem yet, just making sure I understand where I'm at so far.
Right, just, just for clarification purposes, only the town can apply for this grant.
Right.
So that's why Avesta had to come to us. So, so this is a fairly standard procedure, actually, for nonprofits to approach the town, you know, towns in which they want to operate, to request their application for a CDBG grant.
So from an accounting standpoint, if Josh is signing for the town for the grant, appreciate that you're going to oversee the whole process, and, and I, and I don't have any real concerns, but is there some sort of reporting that happens from Avesta back to us as to the status of the grant? How does the grant get closed out? When you reach the end of the project, what does that look like for reporting?
Yeah, I don't, could you speak to that?
Sure. Yep, so, you know, the, the county is administering the grant, and the town is in that, like, sort of that middle approval, you know, so, so the, you know, so the approval needs to go through the town to the county, and then the grant is dispersed to the town, you know, the town sits in the middle.
Right, so we'll be holding the money, and we'll transfer it to Avesta.
So, yeah, so we will use the county's process for, you know, because it's a, right, so we spend the money first and get reimbursed, so we have to have all of the documentation and the request for funds, so we will put that together, the town will be responsible for it, just the town will be responsible for looking at it.
Doing it, yeah.
And saying that, yep, it's, it's good to go, you know, back to the county, so it'll be sort of this, this flow, and if there's any, anything that, you know, so we'll be working with the county to make sure that it's, you know, a seamless process.
Right, I mean, my experience just observing the community development block grants through the Economic Development Committee in the past is that, yeah, the county is kind of a check on anything you're, you're spending anyway, so it sounds like you'd be using them in that same way for this grant also.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I mean, presumably, the work has to be done to certain standards, and, and it would be the county's job to make sure that those standards were met before the money's dispersed, or would the town, would that be on the town? I guess is the question.
Are you, are you talking about, like, permitting, and what, what kind of standards are you talking about, like?
Well, like, the.
They say they spent $100,000 and.
Right.
Submit that to us, because we're going to pay, we're going to endorse that $100,000. So, you know.
Was the work actually done, you know, again, to what, was it done well? I guess is, standards I'm thinking of is, like, construction standards, or, you know, whatever standard governs the work that's being.
Well, I imagine you would still have to pull a construction permit and go through the normal processes for any construction projects, which the town would have input on.
For sure, yeah. Anything that requires a permit, a permit will be pulled.
Right, right. Yeah, I don't think that that is necessarily, because it's a grant-funded process, that would just be because it's a construction project.
There will be some administrative support that the town gives, you know, sort of in kind. It doesn't feel to me like that is going to be onerous in any way, so I guess I'm not concerned, but it, you know, it will be interesting to go through this process and, and maybe at the end of it, take a look at that and just see, you know, what was the town's cost in, in backing the grant, just so that we can put to rest the concern that some people have, if for no other reason.
I'm also not sure what the county does as far as provide municipality funds for administration. I know that there, it's an eligible CDBG, you know, but I'm not sure what the county, it's my first time doing this here, I've done CDBG in Connecticut and Rhode Island, but this is my, my first go in Maine.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I think you're right, that it is an eligible expense, but I also agree with Dan, that it's an expense the town's willing to shoulder, it's not likely to be significant, I mean, Avesta is an experienced partner, has done probably hundreds of these grants over the last, you know, since its inception. I remember testifying in, in support, at the public hearing, in support of this project back in the day, when it was York Cumberland House Development Corporation, so there's, you know, this is, they've done a lot of these, so I'm not expecting there's going to be.
Right, and the, and the bulk of grant administration is really all the reporting and that element, which, I mean, if, if, if what we're shouldering is, you know, cutting the check essentially, I don't, I don't, I don't see that that would be a lot of a heavy lift.
I don't either, but I appreciate Doug bringing forward the question.
Yeah, yeah.
Just so that we can.
Oh, certainly, yeah, certainly.
Be certain of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you know if Justine's seen this at all? I know, it's, I know Kristen has seen it, and John, and we've seen it, I don't know.
I have no idea.
Okay, I would just maybe let her know that that's coming down, potentially.
Surprise. I guess she'll change her mind about that budget revenue.
Okay, well, let's go to vote, it, it certainly seems like a worthwhile project. Anne?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Thank you very much for coming out and helping us work through that.
Thank you.
Next up is word from the council chair. First, I just want to thank Dan for covering for me at our last meeting, as I was sick and had no power due to the storm. That was much appreciated. And I want to remind everyone that we are meeting an executive session tomorrow at 5:30 as a follow-up to our town manager search process. And I want to also congratulate Dean Bennett on 30-plus years with the town and his retirement. I think several of us were very sorry to miss his party last week, but I hope he had an excellent send-off, and I, I think maybe some fishing or something is in, in his future, so that's pretty exciting. I also wanted to point out, I think all of you received an email from John Hart regarding the hiring of a temporary finance support position. Essentially, we would be using already budgeted monies for FY24 to support at the temporary hire in basically getting our books in order for our new auditor, and also this upcoming FY25 budgeting process. And John did inform me also that that is potentially a proposal for another staff position in the FY25 budget coming, coming forward, so. I know, I spoke with John on the phone, Josh, while you were out of town, and he was going to move forward, feeling like that was a town manager decision, at least in this budget cycle, but he wanted to flag it for us, and so I'm just calling people's attention to it here also. We had talked about some budget meeting, budget workshops coming up, I think we settled on that during our workshop space earlier tonight. I just want to also flag some potential workshops coming up. I mentioned Resiliency needs some time on February 6th. Going to also be reaching out to Lacey, she was hoping to have some time with Chief Alkanic and Mo to talk about how the Blueberry Festival needs to be budgeted and organized next cycle. I'm hoping to do that at our February 20th meeting, if everyone's available. I know that the Blueberry Festival has gotten quite large, especially in the last couple of years, and there's concern about properly budgeting for expenses around public safety and other, and other, and other things, so I think having a workshop to just flesh what, flesh out those ideas would be beneficial. And then I'm, Matthew and I met after the cannabis workshop with Main Municipal Association to talk about how we would like to formulate a committee to, to come up with recommendations for changes to our cannabis ordinance, and I'll be looking to schedule some workshop space, hopefully in February or March, to continue that conversation. I also received an email, I guess via, or rather, a letter via certified mail, that our FEMA flood zone maps have been updated. I haven't, I haven't looked at the letter yet, but I just wanted to flag it, I guess, I guess there was a process that the federal government, did you read, did you read the whole letter?
As much as I could, I couldn't make much sense of it, apart from to pass it off onto the more responsible people who both deal with the maps and the planning of the town.
Okay, yeah, so it sounds like our flood zones have been updated, and they are on record, if people are interested in seeing what those are. And then I just want to note, since I wasn't here at our last meeting, that, and I'm sure Anne mentioned it at the time, that Anne and I did meet with Dale Doughty to discuss the most recent edits to our cooperative agreement earlier in December, and we're just waiting to hear back from him and the DOT on whether or not we can move forward with approving that cooperative agreement, hopefully by our next meeting on the 16th. And, oh, and I also wanted to note that I did take the Vision Zero survey that's been out, and I would like to encourage everybody to do the same, they're just looking for input on how safe we feel in our community, walking and biking, and, you know, it was a pretty short survey, and they're just trying to gather as much information as they can from the communities they're involving. I think the link is on our website, if anyone's looking for that. That's all I had. Josh, did you, I know you've been out of town, do you have, do you have much to say?
I was just thinking back, and I realized. I was just thinking back and I realized that the last time I was sitting here, four hours later, I was on a flight and a grand total of four days, four business days ago is when I got back, so. All I want to say is I was able to sadly watch the storm from 3,000 miles away and constantly refreshing the CMP website that I had to find out what the outages were, and I just do want to extend the thanks to everyone who played a role in both maintaining services, the decision to shut down that day, knowing that the roads were getting cleaned up, knowing that the grounds are being cared for. It was a fantastic feeling, knowing I felt really powerless and helpless from so far away, but knowing that I had some very good people there. And just to go back to my own home, I want to thank the staff members of the library and specifically Darcelle DeVoe for putting forth the effort during the outages to get the word out that the library is open. We luckily had power and had no disruption, so for two days, we were jammed with people who were looking for power strips, outlets, somewhere warm, running water to brush their teeth, so it was great to be able to both have that as well as to thank the council for funding the generator that we put into the grant last year. It wasn't hooked up yet, so I was very happy that we maintained power, but I do see this as a kind of circumstance we're going to have to get a lot more used to, so I'm very happy to build some resiliency to just provide some basic services for those who need it.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah. It was a certainly disruptive storm and it's, it's good to be prepared, certainly. Okay, I will move on to committee reports. Matthew, do you want to start?
Sure. The Great Community TV Committee met last week on the 27th. We had a really good presentation from Randy Visser about some legislation that, that the Maine Community Media Association has been working on to help towns deal with the franchising process with cable companies or, you know, Charter, Charter or...
Charter Communications?
Charter Communications, which is their, that's terrible. The company that is the sort of the face of Charter Communications is...
Spectrum.
Spectrum, thank you. Can you tell us January 3rd? So, and also Kyle gave a report, he went to the Alliance for Community Media Conference in Vermont. He talked about, you know, he took some workshops on building a team for Community Media Center, on media justice and lots of vendor technology presentations. And he also just spoke about what a, what a sort of a diverse experience it was, and I really think it really shows the value of being involved in a national organization on these, along these lines, as well as the state organization in terms of the franchising process. So I, it was a really good meeting, really learned a lot about what was going on with the franchise process and our, I guess we're part of a 16-town consortium, trying to deal with Charter Communications. And, and that effort, that franchising effort is one of the reasons why we got that sort of windfall from the, from Spectrum last, in the last budget cycle. So, and, you know, the franchise agreement negotiations is ongoing with those 16 towns. We're hoping to maybe prompt a little movement on that. That's all, that's the only committee meeting I've been to since the last meeting. So, let's see, next week is the, on the 8th is the Rec Committee and Dry Mills is the 15th. So those are my committee meetings before the next council meeting. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Marty?
Okay, Wild Blueberry Festival will meet via Zoom in January on a date to be announced. They'll be doing that once a month of spring. The Blueberry Festival is always on the 2nd Saturday of August, this year it's August 10th, and congratulations again to Grace and Deb. The Planning Board will meet January 11th. And Zoning Board had a meeting December 27th where they dealt with three requests for variance. The first one was Bentley Meyer Properties of variance for Seinhite, which was granted. The second one was to, was for Robert and Joanna Ritchie, granted a variance to build one additional housing unit. The third one was for SRB Property Holdings, which was tabled because they need more information specifically from the Director of Public Works. Brad Fogg and Georgia Woodbury are looking to take a course at University of Michigan on zoning boards and they'll be requesting funding for it. I think they said the course was a dollar, $125 each.
Oh, okay.
And Finance Committee and Community Day Committee to be announced, and that's all I've got.
Josh, we should probably make a note for Tammy to include the cost of those courses in her professional development line items for the budget. Do you know when the course is occurring, Marty?
I don't know.
Yeah, because I don't know if it's part of FY25, if it's part of FY24, then I don't, she'll just have to see if it's budgeted, but I...
Well, they said they're online, so we could probably take them anytime, maybe, I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Thanks, Marty. Dan?
Yes, for committee reports, I don't have any, other than as Marty said, the Planning Board is meeting on the 11th at 7:00 PM. I did attend the ZBA meeting on the 27th. I did speak with Brad Fogg, who's the Chair of the ZBA. We talked a little bit about training for CBA. I think personally, from attending that meeting, it's pretty clear that they need some help, they want some help, and I think, to be honest with you, we've been a bit remiss in not paying them more attention.
So Nate and I met with Brad in the spring of this year to inquire whether or not Brad would be interested in having a meeting with the council and our attorney, because she's offered to host, like, a train, they have, like, training services through our...
Yeah, I talked, I mentioned that to Brad too. He's going to send me some information about this course he's interested in, which I'll share with everybody. I think at some point, we're going to have to plan it, to orchestrate it, but I really think we need a workshop with us, the Planning Board and ZBA all together.
Okay.
Because I think the three, we're the three legs of the stool, so to speak, and I think we need to be clear about each other's role, and I think there is definitely some confusion about what the role is.
Well, Brad seemed, at least in the spring, that he would be open to it. It sort of fell off the radar with Nate leaving and all that.
Yeah, and everything else that's going on.
Right, so, but I think we, it would might, as you say, it would be worthwhile to revisit that and perhaps include the Planning Board.
Yeah, I think we'll have to, I think, like I said, I think we'll have to think that through. I think the idea of having our attorney meet with ZBA specifically, I think would be a, as soon as possible, something that I would recommend.
Okay.
And I think, I think the majority of the ZBA would be in favor of that, after talking with Brad.
Okay, that's, I mean, it's good to hear that he was, would be interested in that.
I haven't heard from him for the, for the course they want to take, so I'm going to, I'll send him an email. It's been busy, obviously, with the holidays and everything.
Yeah.
It's not a complaint.
Multitude of things.
I don't want it to slip through the cracks again.
Okay.
But that's all I have for committee reports.
All right, Ann?
Yeah, neither of my, or none of my committees has met since we last met as a council.
Right. OEC had to cancel their meeting the week of the 20th due to the storm and loss of power. We're meeting again on the 11th of January. GP Cog is reconvening after the holiday break on the 16th, and Joint Leaders is scheduled to meet on the 11th in the morning, so New Gloucester and School Board, and I'll report back once we do that. That's all I had for committees. Ann, did you have anything to report on correspondence activities?
Yeah, I received today an email from Ryan Fecto at the Governor's Office of Policy Innovation and the Future advising that their office had had a complaint about Avesta's proposed senior affordable housing project next to the existing Meadowview property. I just told Ryan that my impression is that the council is strongly in support of the project, I wasn't aware that anything had changed, and I, if someone has complained to council recently about that project, I'm not aware.
Why would he complain to you, or why would he send that to you?
He knows me and I think he just was, you know, letting me know that, or letting us know that, you know, there was a, somebody had raised a complaint about the development. It was just a heads up, I don't think it was any, it was no official response required.
I mean, I would think that would go to the manager, that would be, but anyways.
And the VTP Communications Committee was going to meet tomorrow, it looks like we're going to be bumped to Friday for scheduling reasons. I'm still waiting, as we've discussed, for the VTP Cooperative Agreement to come back from MDOT. I nudged Dale Doughty again this morning and we did get feedback from our legal team on our edits to the Cooperative Agreement, and they were pretty much in line with what we had also flagged, and I forwarded those to you earlier this evening. Vision Zero meets on Thursday, that task force via Zoom. We received another note from Bill Chapman about the, his issues with the driveway on his property on Route 100. I advised him that we generally defer to the council chair and have to put you on the hot seat.
I'm sorry, yeah, no, I know, I will, I'll note that in a minute.
Okay, and so, but that, you know, I also sort of gently pointed out, the reality is that we're down staff, we're short-staffed, we don't have a town manager, you know, it's been a tough go, so things happen when you're short-staffed. And then lastly, I had a note from a resident of Meadowview that, who's been just terrific at keeping an eye on the link between Hancock Street and the Plaza, and when we initially upgraded that link, the...
You're talking about the sidewalk?
Yeah, the paved path there in the woods. The Meadowview at that time was very concerned about blocking it to motorized vehicles, and that's why there are signs up on either end of the trail saying no motorized vehicles allowed, but apparently there's a person who owns a dirt bike who feels entitled to use that trail, that paved path, whenever he feels like it, and he's been, you know, he's on a dirt bike, he's a little hard to catch. So I just, I want to bring that up to make sure the public understands that that is a non-motorized trail, that's very strict, you can bring your bicycle on it, that's perfectly fine, but there are a lot of, you know, people from the neighborhood with kids and there are older people who use that trail, we just can't have motorized vehicles on it, so no ATVs, no dirt bikes, no snow machines. So I don't know if there's any way that we can act on that, really.
I think having them call the sheriff.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Because they'll enforce our ordinances, so.
I will ask them to do that, and I also, in the past, I've been able to call on John Powers, who was the former Chair of the Green and Gloucester ATV Club, but he's stepped down his chair, and I think they've since merged with Raymond, so it's a bigger group, but John was amazing, he would just, like, know instantly who it was and go to the person and say, "Don't do that anymore," and it was done. So I miss John in that capacity, for sure, but we'll do our best to try and track this fellow down and talk some sense to him.
Maybe he knows who the new contact would be.
Yeah, he does, yeah.
Do we know, is this prohibited by ordinance, or is it just posted?
It's not an ordinance, yeah, good point, it's just posted, yeah.
I don't know, is that enforceable by the sheriff or?
Do we actually have an easement through there, or is it just private property with an easement?
I think we have an easement, it's private property.
It is private property.
I think it's owned by the Plaza, most of it, yeah, we have an agreement with Plaza.
Thanks, Ann. Dan?
Yes, I also heard from Bill Chapman. I was also copied a letter from Gerald Fussit to Doug Webster about their planned work on Deer Acres. I also had an email from Derek Shirley, who's on the ZBA, who took issue with my participation at their last meeting, which I forwarded, I think, to all of you. I did have a conversation with Brad Fogg at that same meeting, who didn't have an issue with my presentation or my comments at that meeting. And that was the meeting on the 27th. The ZRB Holding, just so you know, has asked for a building permit for the lot on the corner of North Raymond Road and Route 26. The lot, the remainder of the lot that used to be the Dry Mills store. It sits in a position such that no part of that lot would be eligible for a curb cut using MDOT's formula for that lot. Unfortunately, the person who bought the lot paid a significant amount of money for it prior to finding out what they could do with the lot, and so they have asked the ZBA for relief because of that. I think personally it would be a huge mistake if anything was allowed in that lot, because it would just recreate the problems that we solved when we finally got that intersection fixed. I appreciate the fact that it is a hardship, but the ZBA has a responsibility both to the community and to the individual when they make these decisions, and sometimes you have to make difficult ones, and Mr. Shirley took exception to my comments.
Oh, yes, he sure did.
And I also saw him at the transfer station where he reminded me of his displeasure with my comments.
That takes a step.
But that's, that's, that's all I had for that, and then, yeah, the ZBA has tabled the decision on that intersection pending some more, the owner's attempt to try and solve some of those problems and bring more, some more information forward. Without, well, yeah, that's all I have.
Thanks, Dan. Marty?
I have no communications.
Matthew?
Yeah, other than the ones everyone else has had, I haven't.
Right, yeah, so I also have received Mr. Chapman's and Mr. Fussit's emails, and I do apologize, I have just been very behind on email, and then to add, the storm power outage, prolonged power outage and the holidays, I'm even further behind, and I will get back to these individuals tomorrow, so. That's all I had for communications, though. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn at 8:22 PM.
Some...
Second.
Okay, Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Good night, everyone.